Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Taos County Board of Commissioners regular meeting for today, March 18th. We have quite an agenda. The mayor just kind of turned it over to me and asked me if we were going to get out of here at all today. I said, "We may not be." And I hope commissioners brought their tents, just in case. Again, welcome. And I'd like to ask our county clerk to lead us with the roll call, actually, to continue with the roll call.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
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 Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, for the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like to welcome the students from the Vista Grande School, Sequoia Left Hand, Natalia Owens-Eskibell, Islyn Right, Autumn Reed, Ryan Castro, Sarah Williams, and Jason Piralles to come forward to lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome. Go ahead, Natalia.
... allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda for today. Commissioners, staff, any changes? Commissioner Sanchez?
Chairman Commissioners, if I could move up 13A on the CDBG grants, up to seven, included with 7A with our lobbyist, Robert Apolaca.
Any other changes?
As amended, Chairman.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we'll move on to item five, Citizens Concerns. Anyone from the public that wishes to speak at this time? No one? Mr. Bellis would like to congratulate you on your new position as the Town of Taos City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was a little... It was a little different going to work this morning after four years of showing up here. It's kind of like going out and celebrating and waking up in the morning in your ex-wife's house. But I wanted to thank all of you as commissioners, Mr. Archuleta, Mr. Malone, for what was a wonderful opportunity of working here at the county, and I hope that's not over. We've still got some good work to do with the Land Use Code and the Housing Authority. We're doing some fantastic discussions right now at the staff level between the town and the county, and I think that's just going to get better. I'd like to continue that open-door policy that the county manager and myself have always had for any of the employees and any of the elected officials on either side, and be available to you for any questions at any time, should you have them. I believe that the new staffing arrangements and the new elected officials are going to create a new era of prosperity and goodwill in this community that'll go a long way and create benefits for decades. You do have one item on your agenda that I guess I would like to address now, both as your former staff member and then now representing the town, and that is that a little later, you'll be voting on contracts for the 911. Again, I think we've made some remarkable progress in the last 10 days. There was a meeting on Friday with the chief and the fire department here, and everybody seems to know how we want to go and how we want to get there. The difficulty does not seem anymore to be the location or the equipment. We all seem to agree on that. It's just the migration of the software. Initially, as you remember, we were starting from day one here, and we didn't particularly have to worry about the prior records because unfortunately, there seemed there'd be two PSAPs. Now, clearly, it looks like we all want to work together. Law enforcement and public safety would benefit if that database could be translated from the old systems to the new systems. The county here, we have not yet had that discussion with the jail and the sheriff, and the town is just starting that. Today, there will be a meeting, excuse me, at 10 o'clock at the town with Advanced Communications in regards to how that's done. Right after that, there'll be a meeting here at the county, and hopefully, we can get a timetable for that. I would therefore ask that when you vote today, please proceed with all due speed in regards to the equipment. We all want to see that up and running as soon as possible. But as regards to software, if you were to vote on that today, it would be locked into, again, that idea of just what we were doing here for dispatch. And clearly, the software manufacturer wants a demonstration to all of New Mexico on what they can do, and if we can package that deal so that everybody gets a discount and we get some free licensing out there for everyone, and we're all on the same page, I think the taxpayers will do better, public safety does better, and the town and the county will do better. So I'd ask you to do, not vote against, but just delay voting on the software package till your next meeting, and hopefully, town and county can come back with a joint proposal and a timeline for that.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Bellis, and again, congratulations. And the county definitely looks forward to working with the Town of Taos now, and I've been asking the mayor-elect and our county manager for a work study, and hopefully, that'll happen here fairly soon so that we can get to work for the people of Taos County and the Town of Taos.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things that's out there that I think would really be helpful for the town and county, if you have that joint meeting, is that the town had played a good chunk of money for an economic development study that is not just the town, but the entire region. I think there's some good findings in there, and if that presentation could be made at a joint meeting, the town and county, I think it'd give us a good long-term perspective of how we can join together. And I would love to stay for the rest of the meeting, but this new guy I work for, oh my God, he works you to death, so I gotta get back.
I gotta say, oh.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? No, Rick, don't go yet. If you have to leave, I gotta ask you a question or two. But actually, county manager wanted to...
Rick, I just wanted, again, congratulations. I was there last night, and again, good luck. I look forward to working with you. But on the SLUET system also, is the town still looking at going on an upgrade on the SLUET system? Again, that's about a $28,000 ticket that you guys are looking at doing an upgrade. If we could also defer that until we can come together and figure out how we could work closer with that software system, I think that would help.
Absolutely. Any money we can save on either side is helpful, and as I say, we'll have a better answer on that today. If there is an upgrade, it would only be because it's necessary as part of the migration of the data. But it'll be interesting, because that'll help us with the jail information and the sheriff, too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and it is definitely a new era, you know, for both the town and the county. It's really interesting. One of the things that I noticed with my cellphone, Mr. Bellis, and everyone else here is that the day after the Town of Town elections, my phone was just ringing off the holder here. Just a lot of people with a lot of new hope, newfound hope towards what the town and the county can do together, if we work together, and I'm hoping that we can move that way and we can move fairly quick, conscious of our community and the people that we serve, so that we can do a good job. Thank you very much. Commissioner Barone, Mayor Barone, thank you very much for putting yourself out there, for being able to represent the people of Taos County. I know that you've gotten a little bit of flack with the fact that you're serving as a county commissioner as well, but I think for now, it is a very good relationship, and thank you so much for the dedication. And really, thank you to your wife and your family, because they're the ones that'll have to put up with a lot, and they're the backbone and they're the corner of your foundation, and really wish you a lot of luck in your new position as our mayor.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. Rick, congratulations. You're going to make a great town manager.
Thank you.
I'm going to miss having your office upstairs to bug you about things, but it's not too far. I'll go over there, too, so it's really good to have you still in local government, because you're so well-informed about all the issues that we have before us. And so, my question is, on the RFP today, I just want to make sure that the people who are going to be our partners from the town, the new director and the chief of police and you and anybody else that's going to be involved with it, is fully aware of the product list, and it's clear that there's no equipment that's being duplicated. It's always been my understanding that whatever usable equipment that's at Kit Carson could be moved, and so I just wanted to make sure that that's the case.
Well, in regards to the CASIDIAN, again, that doesn't belong to the town. It belongs to DFA, so there's no assurance that we could move that. We've looked at some of the numbers on that. While it was 380-something thousand dollars, more than half of that was related to the installation, and we would still then, in moving it, have to take on half of that cost. The other difficulty in moving the CASIDIAN itself would be that we would have a downtime, and we're not sure what that is, and we're not sure also if it would void the warranty. Then we'd have to purchase a warranty on the CASIDIAN to cover what's wrong with, if it goes down. Some of those details, again, we will not know the answer on until today, when we meet with Advanced Communications, because it's a new world. The presumption was, we wouldn't have access to that equipment.
Right. But how will that affect our vote today?
Well, I truly believe, as I think the rest of the county 911 committee did, that there's no question, and I don't believe there's any question at the town, that we need to upgrade the consoles.
No, I understand. I just mean in relation to the equipment that's at Kit Carson. I just don't want to commit to equipment that we may be able to transfer, and like you said, it's so new now, and you're just conducting your meetings today. I would like the results of that meeting before I make my decision on the award of the RFP.
Well, the ideal is, we're going to need at least three stations, and that's just if we do the county and the town and the smaller municipalities. The hope is, from today's meeting, that we'll find out that the county will only have to purchase two consoles to upgrade, to be able to take advantage of the CAD. That would be initially, the call intake console, and the second one would be the public safety console, which would be the first ones to take advantage of the new software and the new technology that we cannot take advantage of in the existing consoles. We could bring the other consoles over and use the third one initially, and Taos Fire yesterday, and Alan Sanchez, our fire chief, came to a great proposal on that, because they use a program called Firehouse for Fire, which is already in place. They don't have the ability, and it will be some time before they can take advantage of the CAD systems, and it's less critical to them than it is on the public safety side. So we could tie those in and, for the first time, have those consoles, when they're brought over, used for dedicated fire dispatch and EMS, which would reduce our ISO rating, without having to purchase all three consoles. So there is, we can use all of that. As regards the CASIDIAN, I think that at this point, it would not be a bad idea at all to follow the FEMA and the Homeland Security guidelines, which is that if something happens to the building where you have all your stuff, that you have a backup. We still have an antenna over at the town. We have an OEM headquarters down in Yanoo, and to me, we also have a piece of reverse 911 equipment, which is a great tool to get messages out to the people in the public, particularly senior citizens. And if the CASIDIAN could be used for that as a backup station or in the reverse 911, I don't think we would be losing any investment. But again, the ability of our, our ability to be able to move the CASIDIAN and use it for our purposes is going to be entirely dependent on DFA. They could very much tell us they're going to pull it, now that we have a united PSAP, and move it to another town that was on the list for an upgrade.
No, I understand, and I just would like to know, before we make a commitment for the additional equipment, and my hope is that we can get a JPA and a governing body in place to make a recommendation on that, so.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if I could just, Commissioner Blankenhorn, if I could just address a little bit about, the other thing that's real important is that we have to have an up-and-running system while we have our system, get our system up and running. And the reality of that is, the conversations we've had with the town recently is that we would like at least a one month to a month and a half training cycle on the new equipment, on the new CAD system, on all of that stuff. So in reality, what the town currently has has to stay in existence for about a month, a month and a half after we've built our system, just so that we can have a good transition. What we do with that equipment after and how that all happens is yet to be determined, but if, you know, we're thinking about contracts today, and we're thinking about, well, if we can take this from the town and we don't have to do it here, we really can't do that simply for the reason that we need to have that system up and running at the town while we're getting ours up and running, and then once we flip the switch, then we can move that equipment, as Mr. Bellis has stated. We can look at an alternative location for it, for backup. We can bring some of the new desks over. We are going to be wired for that. What's going to be in front of you today is going to be actually two desks instead of the three, with the hopes that eventually, we'll bring the third and fourth one over from the town for training desk and for backup, and then we'll have the other system up and ready to go for that, if that makes a little bit more sense to you.
Thank you. And Mr. Bellis? Mr. Chairman, I also want to remind the commissioners that the reason we even started looking at these consoles, and even the chief was saying, "No matter what, we need to upgrade these," is that Advanced Motorola told the town two, three years ago that they couldn't fix them anymore. They were not going to warranty them. They were, there's no maintenance agreement on them. There's no guarantee if they go down, they can get parts for them, and that's a dangerous situation to be in. So backup is great, but we don't want to say, "Okay, let's substitute that for these."
One last question. Is the mayor going to let you finish the LUR?
As I said once before, Mr. Blankenhorn, one of the things I really will take pleasure in not hearing is, "Mr. Bellis, when is the LUR going to be done? I want a timeframe."
Ms. Chairman, Commissioners, I also want to address the commission. Basically, today, we're going to be addressing the RFP, not the contract, and those are two separate items, so we'll have to, once we have the award of the RFP, then we'll have to draw up the contract and bring that in front of the commission at a later date, which would have all these intricate details into it.
And, Mr. Bellis, what is the reaction from DFA with all these recent changes? What's going on over there? What are they saying?
Nothing formal, but at this time, staff, including Leandro, have had some informal communications that they seem very pleased that we're all working together.
Very good.
As is the case for economic development and a number of the other departments.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Bellis.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else who wants to speak with regards to citizens' concerns?
Thank you very much.
Ms. Chairman, Commissioners, if we could have Forest Service come up at this point?
Okay.
Rick, thank you.
John Mieda. Mr. John Mieda from the Forest Service, welcome.
Honorable commission, Mr. Mayor, it's an honor to come before you and address you. My name is John Mieda, and I'm the Natural Resources Staff Officer on the Carson National Forest, the acting forest supervisor in place of Buck Sanchez, who couldn't be here today. He asked Ranger Tammy Malone, the district ranger on the Camino Real Ranger District, and I to come and give you a few facts about, I think, well, we feel a little bit like a fish out of water, because here we are talking about national forest management on grazing allotments, and, but we feel that it's a very important topic to address with the commission, and this particular briefing or update has to do with a grazing allotment that's called the Fletchado Grazing Allotment, and many of you folks probably drive by it or have even recreated on it or hunted on it or collected wood on it. And so I think that the topic at hand will resonate very well with the audience and with you commissioners. So I would like to just, I guess from a standpoint of citizens' concerns about water quality on this particular allotment, would like to give you some reassurances and some facts and information about this grazing allotment. First of all, a little bit of history about this particular grazing allotment, and a statement that I think is very, it describes our mission and our congressional mandate with regards to grazing of livestock on national forests, your national forest lands. Okay? So grazing of livestock on national forest lands is a congressionally-designated mandate for use of national forest system lands. The intent of this congressional mandate is to support domestic livestock, contribute to the well-being of the surrounding communities, and contribute to the economic diversity and social well-being of communities that depend on the range of resources for their livelihood. Now, the Fletchado Grazing Allotment is located approximately 12 miles east of Taos and one mile west of the village of Angel Fire. The primary road access to this grazing allotment is US Highway 64, Forest Roads 5 and 70. This grazing allotment contains about 6,331 acres. Lands, including the Fletchado Grazing Allotment, first came into your national forest system lands in the early 1950s, and the University of New Mexico actually was the owner of these lands where this grazing allotment is. This included, this land transfer that came into the forest system management happened in the early 1950s, and it was 13,277 acres, and the legislation or the mechanism that allowed this is referred to as S-2617. At the time of this transfer, the landscape was characterized by this very telling statement from, that I, we read in a 1948 letter to the Forest Service. The land was described as heavily infested with prairie dogs, which contributed materially to the damage done by livestock. And I want to bring out the point that, at this time, the land was owned by the University of New Mexico, and it was subleased through the state to grazing permittees at the, through the state lands office. The letter continues, and it says, "Active erosion is quite noticeable along the canyons and the upper portion of the Rio Fernando de Taos. As the resource staff officer on the Carson National Forest, I believe that much progress has been made in the management of the Fletchado Grazing Allotment in terms of stabilization of the Rio Fernando, bringing the number of livestock permitted into alignment with the carrying capacity of the land, and addressing widespread soil erosion. Livestock management on this grazing allotment, as well as other grazing allotments, isn't perfect, but it's definitely getting better and sustainable, and we wanted to give you that reassurance. On the Carson National Forest, there's 74 grazing allotments, over 1.4 million acres of public lands of your national forest, and the community that depends on these range resources for forage and livestock is very important to our socioeconomic and the health of the forest on the lands. So wanted to just bring you a little bit, give you a little bit of history on the Rio Fernando. I'm going to ask Tammy Malone if she would talk a little bit about the current grazing management on this grazing allotment.
The grazing permittee is Hispanic. He's a northern New Mexico rancher and a businessman, and he's very actively engaged in the management of this allotment. He's expended his own money and energy to upkeep the building of fences and to develop water sources on the allotment. In June of 2009, we signed a new planning decision. That's referred to as NEPA, the National Environmental Policy Act, and it included a lot of public and government involvement from various agencies and jurisdictions, and the grazing permittee was very involved throughout that process. Some features of the decision include, but they're not limited to the following, there's a flexible range of numbers, so such as a drought year like this, we can deal with a lower number of cattle going onto the allotment. That ranges from 100 to 131. He only went on with 75 last year. The range of numbers of cattle is dependent on several factors, including the availability of forage, water, range readiness, and management intentions of the permittee. Cattle will eventually be rotated via a seven pasture rotation system, and there will also be additional construction and reconstruction of water resources, fencing, prescribed burning on the allotment to keep meadows open, and range monitoring, such as the readiness, whether it's ready for cattle to go on in the early summer, the utilization of forage, and E. coli monitoring, which I think the county has heard a lot about on that particular stream. Enhancing the riparian conditions around Apache Spring by refencing it and relocating of wildlife and livestock drinkers to drier spots higher up on the mountain also helps with the riparian conditions. We will also be limiting the use to only 10 days in the riparian pasture, which is right along Highway 64. There was an additional EA that was signed in 2012, and that is for additional fencing so that we can move it into that seven pasture rotation and also help with some of the water gaps and things in the area, which will reduce the sedimentation and protect the stream banks. Do you want to?
Okay. So I think at this time, you're probably guessing well that we're talking about the headwaters of the Rio Fernando, okay, the Rio Fernando de Taos. And so we feel compelled to have a few little remarks about grazing effects on the watershed and water quality. And we would just say that wild ungulates and cattle, along with many other recreational and commodity uses, affect the watershed health and water quality. And there is a big difference between grazing and overgrazing. Matter of fact, without grazing, you know, plants and the plant community wouldn't be able to replenish and survive, and the beauty and the forage that so many people are dependent on in the national forests simply wouldn't be available. There are many variables in terms of grazing, which dictate the overall effects to watershed health and water quality, including the duration and the intensity of riparian grazing, defecation near or on water sources, bank erosion and destabilization. These factors can be exacerbated by drought, available snowpack, and et cetera, you know, that affect the distribution of grazing animals within riparian areas, wetlands and uplands. On September 13th, 2012, the Surface Water Quality Bureau, which is a division of the New Mexico Environment Department, published a total maximum daily load, or TMDL, for the Rio Fernando de Taos. Now, the TMDL is, lists numerous probable sources for levels of E. coli, which is a bacteria that gets in the water. And before I continue, I just, I forgot to mention, but I want to mention, that the Rio Fernando de Taos, by NMED standards, is actually designated for agricultural use, for watering of livestock, for irrigation of croplands and meadows and fields and alfalfa and such. So this total maximum daily load, or TMDL, lists numerous sources of E. coli in the Rio Fernando, and I thought it would be interesting for you to guess what kind of sources, what kind of contributors to the levels of E. coli there are. And they are listed as, in the report, rangeland grazing, drought-related impacts, hiking, pets, waterfowl. pets, waterfowl, wildlife other than waterfowl, low-water crossings, stormwater runoff, onsite treatment systems, septic and sewer systems, and other, too many to talk about. So the time that, there's a time that's listed to attain certain standards of, so that E. coli levels will be at an acceptable rate. And I don't, as far as we're concerned, there's no exceedances of E. coli in Rio Fernando, except as they correlate to periods of drought and when there isn't sufficient runoff in the water. Elk, deer, livestock, rodents, warm-blooded mammals come and can defecate in the water and cause levels of E. coli to rise. The time required to attain standards for all reaches is estimated to be approximately 10 to 20 years. And stakeholders in this process will include the Soil and Water Quality Bureau and other parties identified in a watershed-based plan. The cooperation of watershed stakeholders will be pivotal in the implementation of these TMDLs as well. Tammy?
Okay. Next, I'll talk about what some of our plans are to improve the watershed health and water quality. In October of 2010, the Forest Service and the New Mexico Department, Environment Department, signed an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, to document the cooperation between the parties to improve the water quality of New Mexico's waters by implementing progressive watershed-based restoration protection programs to meet applicable water quality standards. That basically is monitoring. So we've been jointly monitoring, I think Amigos Bravo and some other groups are also involved in the monitoring of the Rio Fernando de Taos. Since the final TMDL was given to us in September of 2012, the Forest will continue to implement best management practices to control non-point source pollution under the Clean Water Act. Examples of best management practices include, but are not limited to, water quality monitoring, adaptive management, forage utilization, adjusting livestock numbers, season of use, and livestock distribution. Competitive funding for practices such as the Environment Department's 319 grant program helps us implement those BMPs as well, so that we can move toward that end result that we want. We've had many partnership opportunities with the New Mexico Game and Fish, the Quivera Coalition, CFRP grants, Secure Rural Schools, the Chi Mayo, and the Rocky Mountain Youth Conservation Corps. The Forest Service and the grazing permittee will continue to work together to fund fencing projects, new water gaps, moving trick tanks to better locations, doing prescribed burning, and generally implementing the grazing rotation through internal funding and external partnership opportunities. One example, the Apache Pass Fence Project was funded a couple of years ago. The contract was finally awarded this year to construct some boundary fencing and a pasture division fence in Apache Pass, approximately one and a half to two miles of fence. So that's really going to help us. Current exclusions, some of you've probably seen them, as you drive along Highway 64, there's three different exclusions, and we're monitoring different kinds of uses in there along the riparian area. One is utilization with no ungulates, so that's like the test plot. It's a total exclusion. Then one where livestock is allowed, is not allowed, but elk and, and the other ungulates are allowed. And then one that's open pasture, so everything can go in there. And that's a habitat stamp project funded by New Mexico Game and Fish. That's a 10-year monitoring project. We've got about seven years left. Do you want to do the last part?
Sure. Okay. So we're just about done here. Don't mean to belabor your time, and thank you for letting us share time with you today. Would like to inform you of the progress of, Ranger Malone referred to a decision that was signed in 2012, which basically put forth management strategies, the different kinds of infrastructure that would be needed on this, this grazing allotment in order for, to have a sustainable grazing operation with livestock, such as waters and fences and prescribed burnings and these kind of things, which are also instrumental in forest restoration and health. And we'd like to update you very briefly about the status of this 2009 decision and the 2012 for additional fences. We're slowly but surely starting to implement these, the required infrastructure and range improvements, but like many of you can relate to, the biggest obstacle that we've had so far is that, you know, Internal Forest Service contracting workload is great, and we've had some issues with, with contracting during our tenure last year. And this year, the, there's a Secure Rural Schools contract in, for the tune of almost $30,000 that's going to pay for about a mile and a half to two miles of necessary fencing to start dividing grazing pastures up so that there can be this rotation, seven pasture rotation system that Ranger Malone referred to. There's been a lot of shifting of priorities during the year. Guess what? I think you could relate to that. And a lot of times when there's a shift in priorities, like if there's unexpected cattle that come up from Angel Fire or private lands adjacent to the, the Fletchado allotment, then the permittee will have to stop work, or the contractors may, we may, they will stop work and be shifted to another area where they would have to finish completing fences and waters and those things. And then, to be really honest, limited funding and resources. Sound familiar? Limited funding and resources. It's not uncommon for the construction of needed range improvements to take, you know, several to more years. I've seen some take five to 10 years to, to really build out and have a fully implemented grazing systems as dictated by NEPA and our allotment management plans. So that's just a little bit of information on this Fletchado allotment. And many of you would recognize the beauty up in the La, the La Jara area, or the gateway to, the Palo Fletchado Pass and the gateway to the Moreno Valley, and appreciate the, the beauty and the utility of, of this grazing allotment. And with that, we'll, we'll end our comments to you and entertain any questions that there might be or any statements.
Now, John and Tammy, thank you for that report. With regards to the amount of, of cattle that are on this pasture, do you have any idea what those numbers are?
Yes.
Last, last year, the permittee went in with 75, which is even below, the low end of the range that we analyzed.
Okay.
When we did the, the planning.
75 cattle, and how much are, how many are allowed?
There, by the, the term grazing permit allows a range of numbers. The low end is 100 head, up to 131 head, and that includes the bull, you know, four bulls and, or several bulls to, to breed the, the cows.
Okay.
So they're, they're well under, almost like 60% of their permitted numbers, if you could look at it that way, maybe.
Now, you mentioned a list of the things that were contributing to the E. coli bacteria in the river. Is there a known number as to how many septic tanks or homes there are along the river that are possibly contributing to the E. coli bacteria?
I, I don't know that the number of homes and septic systems along the area has actually been quantified, but NMED, the Environment Department, New Mexico Environment Department, has just listed them as a cause, and they, I know that there's more work in, in quantifying, you know, probable causes and trying to get a number to the magnitude of what that is. So don't know exact numbers.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner Sanchez?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Miera, Ranger Malone, this doesn't have to do anything with grazing, but wood gathering. My constituents, District 2, Carson, they have talked to me on what, are you going to open up areas up there for those folks, being that the drought's coming up, and it's going to be a fire hazard? And also, the winter that we had, it was very cold, you know, and people were running out of firewood. So how could you support those folks as far as opening areas for wood gathering?
What, what we're planning to do is offer three green fuelwood areas this spring as one way to address the fuelwood issue. We signed the travel management decision the end of September in 2013, which limits cross-country access. So it's going to make it more difficult for us to accommodate the dead and down program that we've had in the past. The green fuelwood program's been extremely successful on the Camino Real district. We've been doing it for several years now. One of the few districts on the Carson that offers that type of a program, and we usually sell out of, for example, 100 fuelwood permits within like a day and a half. There's a line out the door. So the fact that it's green wood instead of dead and down doesn't seem to have affected people so much, they're getting used to it. And that way, we can address the access issues in the permit. The holders of a certain permit will have access on this road, and this road, and this one. And we can address that travel management issue, which is really going to change how people do business on the forest, and how they recreate and things. We will still have the dead and down program, but they'll have to use roads that are open and stay within a corridor, like a 300-foot quarter. So they'll be, you know, hauling their wood by hand a little bit more than they're used to, instead of being able to back up to virtually every stump and, and load her up. So it's definitely a change.
And it's definitely dry. This is the fourth consecutive year of a pretty pronounced drought, and like you mentioned, Commissioner Sanchez, people are concerned about getting in and getting their wood supplies. Ranger Malone, you know, has the distinct distinction, you might say, of having 32 different communities in the Camino Real Ranger District, many of which depend on, solely on wood products for heating and cooking of meals and our elderly and stuff. So we get it, how important it is. And right now, the fire danger isn't such to, to where it's going to prevent people from going in, obtaining their wood permits, and getting the wood that they need. But as we progress through the windy spring and summer months like we did last year, we'll see that we'll have to be collaborating with everybody about what makes sense for, for access to, to communities. We're seeing, you know, it, it's not a, every time you, you watch the news or open a newspaper, you're, you're reading about these catastrophic fires that affect our communities and the avail, availability for wood products and fiber. And we would rather have them being used in, in to heat and cook, and for people's recreation and building than, than going up in smoke. So we're definitely working with, with you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miera, I'm Mr. Malone. And the E. coli, have you people met with this group from Taos Canyon? They have come before this commission and stated that there is too much E. coli coming down the Rio Fernando. Have you addressed that problem with this gentleman?
Jerry Yergin.
Yergin, many times, many times. We've met with Jerry. We've met with him in the field, we've met with him in the office, we've responded to countless letters that he's written us.
And your stand is that there ain't that much E. coli coming down the Rio Fernando?
Well, we, we qualify that by saying, you know, E. coli levels have never been an issue with what's permitted for the, in, in this TMDL, with the exception that at times when there's not, like, there's very little stream flow in the river, that there can be some exceedances. But we don't even know the, the source of all the contributors, and that, and the reach that we're talking about where there's been some exceedances, is, is where there's actually been known septic treatment systems that maybe have not been regulated as well. And to be real honest with you, we have, like Ranger Malone mentions, we have met with Mr. Yergin several times. And I'll just be honest and truthful in stating that there's somewhat of a, an adversarial relationship between Mr. Yergin and the grazing permittee, Mr. Monzanares. And, and there's, we've, we've felt that there's been some agendas in terms of wanting to affect livestock grazing, which is a congressional mandate on national forests. And we don't want, you know, it prompts us to ask the question, you know, grazing is a congressional mandate of the national forest for the reasons that I mentioned, but we ask the question, you know, how can we do it better, and how can we do it sustainably? And we've mentioned a number of ways that we're trying to do this in a sustainable fashion. And in Mr. Yergin's own words, you know, last year, progressively, our management, in combination with our grazing permittee, seems to be getting better and better and, and better. We have problems to work out, but all in all, the health of the forage, the utilization of the forage, the recovery of banks on the Rio Fernando is progressively getting better compared to the, the 1950s when this land came into management by the Forest Service.
Okay. Well, our only hope is that, you know, Taos County can, can work with the Forest Service in, in whatever the necessity is, that we can contribute towards making sure that the Forest Service is successful in accomplishing just what you've stated today, and really appreciate the fact that you're, you're here to, to talk on behalf of this.
Thank you very much, and we'll see you at the table.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me.
Ready to do that.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming and providing us with this information. We've all been concerned about the, the health of the Rio Fernando, and it's very good to know that there is a program in place to mitigate the effects. And, and my understanding from what you said was that it was signed in September 2012?
Yes, sir.
And who signed that?
New Mexico Environment Department.
NMED, okay.
Yeah. Soil and Water Quality Bureau is the umbrella.
Surface, Surface Water Quality Bureau.
Excuse me, surface, yeah. Surface Water Quality Bureau is the parent, like the umbrella for NMED. NMED is a division of the Surface Water Quality Bureau.
And that was an agreement between the Forest Service and NMED to implement a plan to mitigate the effects?
The, the agreement and the plan, you know, the, the next phase of this plan, the first step of this plan was to establish a TMDL, and the contributors, what sources contribute to E. coli in any stream system. The next phase of the plan is the implementation of, of practices, funded or not funded, best management practices, and to, to address non-point solution, non-point pollution sources. And that could be through a number of partnerships, grants, like the NM, the 319. That's a, New Mexico Environmental Department 319 program, and many others, partnerships that, that can address that. So with that, we would say to Mr. Romero, you know, we'll see you at the table because there's lots of partnerships and lots of opportunities to help each other with, with these kind of things.
Is there a timeline within that agreement to completion?
They estimate 10 to 20 years.
Fine, okay. Can we get a copy of that, so that we know how we can possibly be part of it?
Mm-hmm.
Great. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Barone.
And Ms. Malone and Mr. Miera, thank you. Thank you guys for being part of the Forest. Thank you for being part of our community. It's a big, integral part of the whole community at whole. I know, you know, the contribution that you make to our community and the opportunities that you afford a lot of our constituents to, to gather wood and to, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot of people's livelihood. That's what they depend on to, to cook and to, and to heat their homes, and we applaud you for, for doing that, and, and the management style that is presently being looked after. I know that there's a number of issues that we always want to look at, you know, and, and, you know, is there any way that we can further enhance the flow of water in, in that stream, you know? And we look at, you know, removal of non-native species, you know, look at the riparian areas, that if some of those non-native species were removed, would there be additional waters that would actually come down that aren't drinking off that stream that shouldn't be there? And I, you know, we always try to, you know, want to make it better. But I, I thank you guys for doing this presentation and letting us know how this can be taken care of. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, and we look forward to a long and healthy partnership with the county commission, the county, and the town of Taos. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else? Mr. Thilke, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For, for over 20 years now, I've been witnessing these commission meetings. And, and I've seen commissions and administrations with horrible, wasteful and exclusive personal agendas. I'm no expert, but in my opinion, you guys are the best ever. And I'm gonna miss when this commission change is over. And I hope, I hope those of you that are still left are able to, to train the new ones to be, to be as working together as you guys currently are. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thilke. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark Schutz, member of the Taos County Community Wildfire Protection Plan Core Team, also a forest thinning contractor in the county, former member of the Taos Soil and Water Conservation District. I was quite sad to resign from the district, but perceived conflict of interest because I'm so active in forest thinning and the district funds in the form of cost share assistance to the members of the community. Forest thinning, it seemed wisest to step aside from that role on the board. I'm here today also to speak specifically about the Rio Fernando, where an NFL grant, non-federal land grant is currently underway. That's, that's federal national forest money that is funneled through state forestry and then is currently being administered by Taos County in collaboration with the Soil and Water Conservation District, working closely with state forestry, who provides the final inspections for the work. That, in fact, I, you know, I really didn't realize I was gonna come and speak to the commission today, but again, I'm honored to be here. But I, if I may approach, I have a few photographs here that I've marked it. That show the, the active work in the canyon. That's from a PowerPoint. I'm actually gonna deliver a PowerPoint tomorrow evening at Coronado Hall, if anyone's interested in, in seeing a description of how our forests got into such a congested situation and the possible solutions that are underway. On the bottom of that particular page is a photo of Alpine, Arizona, which was saved entirely by a forest thinning effort in conjunction with really active firefighting and defensible space work that was done on behalf of the homes in that community. And that's, that's the work that this NFL grant, which the county is the fiscal sponsor for, in Taos, is involved in in Taos Canyon and also the cost share work that Taos Soil and Water Conservation District funds all over the county. The express goal of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan Core Team is to address each watershed in the county as it's able to, to reduce the hazardous fuel load and initially create cross-canyon fuel breaks or whatever fuel breaks that the Forest Service recommends are wisest in order to prevent catastrophic crown fire from damaging the homes or harming the watershed. Basically, an example would be just south of Esmondola, the Santa Clara watershed's been burned twice now and it's completely decimated. And there's no trees to buffer the precipitation, so the water rushes off very rapidly. The snow is not sheltered there. And it, it's quite a tragedy and it'll have a long-term effect on the hydrologic cycle for the whole community. Obviously, this is intermingled closely with economic continuation of the county as well as quality of life that we've all come to enjoy. It's quite a jeopardy we're in. So this NFL grant is underway. There'll be an item later in your agenda, I believe. Mr. Cordova, your finance director, will be, will be talking about a, a temp loan because as the different entities have worked to collaborate, it's been quite a challenge. This is the first time through, we hope, a maiden voyage as this NFL is, has a very short timeline and the, the cash flow has been impaired because the state, it takes a while to get the, the money to flow out of state forestry. Once this NFL grant is complete, we hope successfully and totally by December 31 of this year, the CWPP core team will be enabled really to apply for another NFL grant on the next funding cycle. And the plausible and likely direction for that will be in, in the Penasco-Truchas-Trompas area because there's a NEPA clearance underway there being facilitated by the Forest Guild out of Santa Fe, who I want to speak publicly in great advocacy for. Forest Guild is an advocacy organization working directly with communities to help facilitate goals that are commonly shared on behalf of everyone again and on behalf of community safety and quality of life. So unless there's any questions, that was generally what I wanted to bring before the commission today, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Schutz.
Thank you, Mark, for all the work you actually do in the, in the community and in restoration of forests. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barone. Have a good day.
Chairman, if we could, I'd like to see if we can amend the agenda. I know we have some kids that would love to be here with us all day, our children from, from, from the Vista Grande School. If we could amend the agenda to move them up, maybe we can table the, the, the approval of the minutes or disapproval, whichever you want to call it, and then, and, and move them up immediately, if we could.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Barone. And with that, we'll also table citizens' concerns now. I know that there were a number of hands that were raised a while ago wanting to say something for citizens' concerns. So we'll skip that minutes and then item 7A. And then we'll move on immediately if there is a second to that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. And listen to item B.
And under discussion, Chairman, we can bring those back afterwards. You know, there was a few more citizens, if you'd like.
Very good.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, are you saying you'll bring the minutes back?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I had something, but that's good.
Okay. So any other discussion? If not, Madam Clerk.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, at this time, I would like to welcome, under item 7B, the students and staff from the Vista Grande School. We have Mr. Scott Moore. Welcome and good morning.
Thank you, Commissioners. Very grateful for you giving us the time to present this morning. I'm Scott Moore, the director of the Beautiful Midden Project. About three years ago, there was a call from Amigos Bravos to form a arts-based inquiry into illegal dumping and toxic release into our local waterways. At that time, we spent some, a good bit of time just observing and speaking to local long-term residents about the situation. And the project has moved from this inquiry into a more proactive countywide objective. And part of this program has been to work with the students. And I've been very happy and thankful to be able to work with the Vista Grande High School in particular, Ned Docherty and Josean Paredes. The teachers there have welcomed me and our ideas into their curriculum so that we can begin to create a little shift of perspective. I've found that a lot of people have developed very good blinders not to see a lot of the problems, but we've, what we've asked the students to do is to open up and create a little shift of perspective. And with this type of initiative, it has essentially become a program of empowerment through artwork and these hard looks at a very real and growing problem in the community. And I know that we've since been working very closely in partnerships and developed relationships with the Taos County Solid Waste Department, the BLM, the Harwood Museum of Art, the TCA here. We've been offered support through the Temper of the Times and the Taos Community Foundation. And we're looking to continue these relationships, not only with the county, but also with the town. It seems like a problem that is very solvable if, if it's a community effort and everybody involved here believes that with the right kind of cooperation and insight that this serious problem that afflicts a lot of our outlying regions and waterways can be remedied. And today, the students are presenting in various forms, part of their experience of observing the trash, of thinking about it. And, and all of this is moving towards a solution-oriented resolution and, and something that we can pass on to our children. And, and so this won't be as acceptable as it has been in the past. So right now, I'd like to introduce Josean, who's been gracious enough to allow me into the classroom and work closely and intimately with the students and have a few words before the students present. Josean, thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Romero and Commissioners. We strive at Vista Grande to give our students an opportunity to be empowered to create change in their own community through the things that they see and they experience in their daily lives. And in doing so, we strive to work with experts and we teach them that in order to create change, they have to learn the changemaker's language. And so thus we are here in front of the changemakers of our community. We are presenting in various different formats to show the different creativity of our students through different media that they have themselves created through their experiences and through forming their belief for how our community can change. So I hope you enjoy the presentation and I'll let it speak for itself. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello. Good morning. My name is Izlin Wright. I'm a student at Vista Grande High School. This is my presentation that I put together on a little background, background knowledge about the project. So at my school, Vista Grande, we like to encourage kids to think in a new direction. So part of that is these kind of topics for the semester. We call them expeditions. And the expedition for last semester was art and activism. We learned about how activism through art and how could, how it can make a change through things. And this is a, an artist's work. Name is Banksy. It's a really powerful quote. This is relevant because... Because, I'm sorry, I'm kind of nervous.
It's all right.
Because at the end, when we got to the project site, the Beautiful Midden site, we were instructed to gather some materials, some trash, pretty much, to create a project for the end of the year. So how Vista got involved? We got involved one day when Scott came to the class and told us about this project. It was in English. And we decided to take a trip out to the Beautiful Midden site, see the full thing and collect trash, as I said. I'm actually in that picture somewhere. I think I'm the, one on the left, one of those people. So this is a, an art project that the Beautiful Midden members made. They decided to make a canfon that stretched from one side of the gorge to the other side. So they left it there for about a month and they came back and they found that someone had decided to shoot at it. So this is a problem because this canfon is at the edge of the, of the gorge. So when they shoot at it, the lead's gonna fly out and go into the water and contaminate that. So we're here today. Why we are here today? We're here today because we want to pass on an idea to you and we hope that you like it. The idea is to start helping clean up around the environment around there, around Taos. There's a lot of dump sites and it's really bad for the environment because it's contaminating and it's killing all these places. Like I said, the lead gets in the water and it contaminates the water, gives fish and wildlife lead poisoning. And that's pretty much all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Izlin.
Well, good morning. First of all, we would like to thank you for giving us this great opportunity to present to you our concerns as youth of this community.
My name is Sequoia Left Hand and we are both sophomores from Vista Grande High School.
I'm Natalia Escibell.
I would like to present to you my poem first. Take it as you may. We find beauty everywhere in this world. Still, we shield our eyes and the beauty is hidden. But open them again, you may forget there was any, ever any beauty at all. You might miss it. Sometimes it's right in front of us, always in sight, never knowing what we're actually searching for. Blind. Look again. We may blindly search, although it is still there. Stay confident, go on as you dare. I remember going to places as a little girl where everything was green and alive, where the birds seemed to sing in tune with the wind and animals scurried in and out of holes that were hidden beneath the sagebrush. Maybe you don't act or you can't because you're frustrated, feeling out of breath, choking between layers of contamination. Frustration is dissatisfaction, but we can escape out of this confinement. Don't tell me there isn't an answer to this mess. Let's finish what we started. We blame our humanly existence, but yet we still conduce laziness. We believe in humanity's laziness like it's integral to our existence. Places I've lived have became, have become a wasteland. All those cigarettes they tossed never seemed to make a difference, but now if you pay close attention, they're our biggest addition. We are practically enforcing deforestation. What are we teaching the next generation? Now as I go back to those places as I'm grown and older, the stench of an old diaper isn't all that fills the air. Many trees are falling and I can't hear the birds. The poison seems to leave its trace, traveling with the wind. This is how it affects us.
I am a fish with my scales, fins and tail. I live in the poisoned water of today, wishing and hoping that those of you who have a say will save the waters I live in today. I am a coyote, a decomposer no doubt, but today all I'm left with is the scraps, trash and waste humans throw out. I am a rabbit. I scamper and tamper across this land, scattered with trash straight from man's hand. I am the youth. I come from no man's land. I come from no man's land, for I am ashamed to see how we diseased these places. We should all be ashamed to show our faces. There is no me or I. It is always we. And together, as a team, we can again make this a place to be proud of, a picturesque scene, for todos somos unos. And this is how it affects the animals. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you.
My name is Autumn Reed. I'm a senior at Vista Grande High School, and I will be presenting a video that I put together documenting what the 10th grade did and how they did it, and what they felt while they did it.
What are you making today? A baby.
Yeah, we found a car seat. We kind of wanted to say that this trash is hurting our youth, and so we're making a baby out of trash.
Baby out of trash. What a great message.
Exactly why a baby?
Well, because we wanted to say it's hurting our youth, and we thought "baby" is a simple way to say that.
Babies are very fragile.
Yep, and so they're also getting hurt. I mean, what future they'd have if...
Is this the start of your baby?
This is the start of our baby. It's not done yet. This is just the materials that we're gonna use. I'll let you two get to that, and good luck.
This is Sequoia Left Hand, and she's a 10th grader at Vista Grande. What did you notice when you started looking for trash in your neighborhood?
When we started looking for trash around our neighborhood, I noticed that there was a lot more trash than I expected, and it was tangled within the sagebrush. And it was around the KFC and Taco Bell part right there, and the trash cans. Of course, it wasn't helping, so there was trash everywhere.
How did this make you feel?
I kind of felt a little upset, but nobody really knows about this stuff. So, I was glad that someone was there to bring something that they know, that they can provide information about it. And so, I was pretty glad that it worked out that way.
Why do you think it's important to keep our neighborhoods and public spaces clean of trash?
I think it's important because future generations should experience what I'm able to experience. At the publo, we swim and we hike, so it'd be really nice for future generations to also experience that as well.
What message does your individual recycled art square speak about you, your neighborhood, and your community?
Well, my art square has a lot of cotton on it, plus computer parts we found. I just wanted to really express that it's dirty and tangled and gross. The chain I found around the publo, just lying under a pile of dirt. So, yeah.
What does the message in this mural mean to you? Trash is like a disease. It spreads everywhere.
Well, I think it is really dotted on, and people need to realize that it's not... It should be important, and we should care about it, and we should start doing something about it. And I'm glad the sophomore class is working to do their best to try to help it and fix our situation.
What do you want people to know from what you've learned this last semester?
I would like them to know that to be open to a lot of things, like trash in our neighborhood, because trash, for one, is drowning us, the whole world, and we need to pay attention to that so that the future generations can also experience the nice things in the world.
How does this project connect to sustainability?
This project connects to sustainability because it's really... We're trying to help the community, and by doing that, we can also provide information and let people know that we can do something about it, and we can make this world a better world.
Good. Thank you.
Well, our final project, Trash Is Like A Disease, It Spreads Everywhere, was made with trash from the Rio Grande, and we were participating with the Beautiful Midden organization to help send a message that basically that this trash is like a disease, it spreads everywhere. We worked very hard on this, and it was a very good experience for our class. Now, we are able to provide information on others to, you know, don't throw trash in the roads. Don't do this because the effects of it can really hurt some people, and animals, and the environment.
Thank you. I think this is the big moment where we'd like to unveil this artwork that was created. These people have seen it through as a process that started from grovelling in these sites, harvesting the trash, and it's nothing less than a transformation of matter. And this is what I hope, through artwork and other continued support, that the town of Taos, that harbors so many artistic impulses, can begin to include this sort of activism as a real potential force and awarding a sense of empowerment to our youth. So with that... So, once again, we'd like to thank everybody of the Commission for giving us the time to impart part of our message. We look forward to continuing this work within our community. And the mural that just blew me away when I first saw it is just a stunning piece of positive transformation, and we will be honored to have it presented in the lobby here for a little time with additional information. So, with that, I want to thank all the students for their hard work and their diligence in getting together this presentation this morning, and we'd like to thank the Commission once again.
Mr. Moore, thank you very much. It's very inspiring. Just, you have a great group of young people that are, I'm sure, going to do some very positive things in our world to keep it a better place to live and to preserve it and to keep it trash-free. You know, I think we all do our part. Others do more. It's just very inspiring. You know, I have to tell this story. When I was a young kid, on the way to the post office, my mom and I had bought some candy bars, and I opened up my window, and I threw the wrapper out the window. And I think I've shared this story with you, and about half a mile up the street, she stopped the car and she asked me to open the door and go get the wrapper, and that was my lesson. And so, you know, there's a lesson to be learned today from all of this, and thank you very much. It's very inspiring. And I know that we've got Edward Martinez that we had asked also to... I know that he's gonna do a presentation later on on behalf of the Solid Waste Department, but I believe he's got a few words to share with us at this moment.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, County Manager, I want to thank Scott Moore and for all the work he's done with these students. The students are our future. They're our voice and, you know, for future generations, you know. They're the ones that are gonna educate the parents on keeping our town beautiful and picking up the trash. What they did is amazing. You guys are quite awesome. We have a good partnership working with Mr. Scott Moore, with Brian Shields, Ms. Malone from the Forest Service, BLM. So, we're, you know, curbing this problem. Since we've gotten our code enforcement official, we've been getting calls like you wouldn't believe. I mean, we get three calls a day. We've been going after these individuals. We do find their information, and we have, actually, this week, we had three individuals going and cleaning up their sites. So, it is working, you know. The word's getting out there that, you know, we're watching, you know, we're the big eye in the sky, and we're watching what they're dumping, and, you know, they're telling their friends, you know, we're making sure they tell their friends, you know, and keep our town beautiful, you know. And thanks to Lorenzo, my code enforcement official, you know, he's really on it, and he's going after these individuals on a daily basis, you know. He's patrolling Taos County, north, south, east, west. You know, Taos County is a pretty big county, and he's all over the county, you know, trying to get these individuals. So, thank you guys for your wonderful work you guys did, and it'll be a pleasure working with you guys some more. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. One of the things that I would like to mention today, and, you know, the students from Vista Grande School are witness, one of the things I spoke to our county manager yesterday is, now with the new collaboration that we have with the town of Taos, to, within the next few weeks, months, possibly, the town and the county should consider a ban on plastic bags. I know that a lot of communities have done it. Santa Fe has done it, and I think it's something that's very effective, and I'm pretty sure that you all found quite a bit of them out in the Rio Grande area when you were working on your project. So, that is something that we definitely need to look at here in the near future, Mr. Mayor. And hopefully, we can all collaborate together on this and move it forward on behalf of Arm of the Earth. Commissioners, Mr. Archuleta?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just for the public, the viewing public from the TV, I'd like to say that we're gonna have the art display out in the atrium here, probably for about a month, a month and a half, as long as we can keep it. And we're also gonna run the video through that, and they're also gonna provide some more information that'll be put out on the table. So, we invite the public to come in and please take a look at the work that the students have done. It's most appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Chairman? Chairman? Years past, we developed a small grant, possibilities for different organizations to come to the county and actually apply for a small grant. And basically, a lot of that work that's possible there was they would assign a certain area for a cleanup. So, that's, you know, if you're interested in something like that, please get ahold of Anita. I think that's an opportunity maybe for something that you might want to do within the school. That might be very helpful. I know there's some students that need to clean up. So, the work is... Thank you.
Very good. Commissioners?
Just want to thank you so much for sharing your work with us and that presentation. I'm really grateful to have this in our lobby for a month or so. Look forward to it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I know we have a number of presenters, and I think we have Patty and Terry also from Taos County Economic Development Corporation that have to get back to your office really quick. Commissioners, I would entertain a motion at this time if we could hear item 7F. Would really appreciate it.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
I'll go ahead and second. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Patty and Terry, and we do have a board member, Riva Swazo, also Mr. Scott Sanger, who's the attorney for Taos County Economic Development Corporation. Blanked out on your name, Scott. Sorry about that.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Commissioners, Chairman. We're happy to be here, and we'll try and just go through this kind of briefly, but we've been really happy to be able to work together with the county, and from time to time, we just like to share with you what we have been doing, and of course, with the community in terms of the range of activities that we do for community and economic development, really for land-based peoples here in northern New Mexico. And as soon as Terry gets her reading glasses on, we'll get started. And we do have an ordinance that I believe is coming forward today for continuation of our community food system circle, and that will be a farm stand market that we're hoping to be able to open soon by the spring. And this presentation that we are going to share with you is something that we did in February in Denver. We were invited by a National Planners Association and a group of elected officials like yourselves were present at the same time, along with their city and county planners. And what they were looking at is the community food system and what the economic development opportunities and the opportunities to increase people's health and to be sure that the food that was being shared with those people in their community and with themselves was not only economically helpful to their local citizens, but was really important for the health of their children and their seniors and every sector of the communities, because we now know that many of our foods that are popular, that are served in the schools, that are served in the seniors, that are available in our grocery stores and in fast food residence, fast food restaurants, are really tied very closely to our epidemics of diabetes, heart disease, and other illnesses. And Taos County and northern New Mexico has always been a place where healthy, wholesome food can be grown, raised, processed, and shared. Indeed, our tradition of self-sufficiency here has been... Indeed, our tradition of self-sufficiency here has been really long and well documented. And I'm sure there are people in the audience who remember really rarely ever going to, having to go to the store, but that it was possible to do a great deal of your vegetables, your meat and, and those items with your neighbors and be able to share.
Well, Commissioners, Mr. Commissioner, thank you all for the time here. We're just so techno over here. So I'm going to just move this quickly because I know there are other people. We really appreciate being here and to be able to share and for the support that really Taos County has given TCDC for really 28 years. It has been, you know, the county has always been behind us. And as that individual had said earlier, this latest county commission has really been very helpful and supportive to us. So I'm going to move this along and then you can talk because I can stand over there.
Okay, great. So what's really going on? Issues of social justice in the food system is the title of our presentation that we did in Denver to planners from all over the, the country. And you saw our beautiful Taos, the philosophy of community, unity, recognizing your equity and using that to create opportunities. And if all those things keep circling around, then we can hope to have in our communities some harmony. This is the TCEDC complex with our spiral gardens, our hoop house, our offices. And we hope, again, beautiful fruit trees this year. We'll see how the weather goes. TCEDC has, over the years, provided the infrastructure and the facilities, the tools and the education to support our community food system. So you see the door to the kitchen, our mobile matanza, our product delivery truck that actually takes from the 40-some businesses that are currently in the food center and the more than 150 who have been through there, some of whom you, you see on a regular basis that now have restaurants, food carts and really national presence with their products, even though they're no longer in our incubator. And that truck carries products for those businesses in the food center to Santa Fe, Los Alamos, Albuquerque. And we actually have 20 stores now that are open to people who are brave enough to come in, take the class, start their food business and get going and then hire other people, which is a tool for community and economic development that's really coming forward across the nation and in other countries. And, you know, as you know, we've been plugging away at it for quite a few years. Go ahead. Some more pictures of the mobile matanza for which we're really grateful for county support and for being able to help us work with the state and with DFA to actually get those funds working in our local community. This is our latest project and this is just a put-together view of something that we want to accomplish. And so this is the dream of a farm stand market and what we have gotten through federal funds through a farmer's market promotion program grant, which was not so easy to get, but we were happy to be able to, go ahead, get the core of what will be our market. And that's a self-contained unit that's half cooler and half freezer. We have people from around the state that are excited about being able to bring their products, their gardener's produce, things that haven't necessarily sold at the area of farmer markets to bear. And the whole reason and goal for doing this is to get the affordable and accessible local food right into the community so that people who have those food assistance possibilities are really able to use them at our market. We're really excited that with the mobile matanza, as you know, that healthy local meat has been a big boon in the community. And indeed, you know, just in the last three quarters, provided almost $3 million of revenue from the meat that was harvested from our local growers and valued at even $5 a pound. And it all stays here. Unfortunately, a lot of it doesn't get into small family homes and to the places that we would really like it to get because the ranchers are able to direct market so much of it. So we're working with our ranchers and we have a few who have committed to allowing us to sell their meat in the form of family packs, something that's smaller because so many of us don't have a huge freezer at home. So we're hoping again that this infrastructure and the things that we've done and the programs with education will also allow us to really be sure that everybody who's interested will be able to share in the bounty. We're just going to go quickly through this, just of the people that we serve over the With cooking and meetings and gardening and classes, some of the, the species that our, our mobile matanza has, has been able to help bring into our bellies and the local market as well are also good foods. Some of the producers, we hope that as you shop in most of our stores, you can pick up a lot of these, a lot of these products that are made at the Taos Food Center. We talked a lot to the planners about leveling the playing field, about making it really possible for those community groups and 501(c)(3)'s and the NGOs, the non-governmental organizations that spring up in communities everywhere to answer the problems and the issues that our constituents and our board members bring to us from the various sectors. So these are just a few pictures. I believe in March, beginning March 31st through April 4th will be our next food sector class, which is taught by the regulators as well as TCEDC to give everybody everything they need to know to get into the food center and kick off their food business with very little capital needed on their part. And that's important because our income equality, our poverty statistics and the ability for people to take their great entrepreneurial skills and, and turn them into something meaningful just needs a boost these days. The mini-classes that we do, our educational program, which is really close to our hearts and, you know, has, has helped a lot of people really take their skills and, and use them. So this is a business planning class. There are a number of classes that we do during the year. The organic composting, which is always a big hit out in the field. Artisan cheese workshops. We're working again with some more local dairy, goat dairy people in particular and a new group of veteran farmers and ranchers that we're really excited about working with. The food preservation workshop that we try and do every fall so everybody can keep that grapefruit in your cellars, your pantries, your freezers throughout the winter. Our program is always part of comida para la vida. This summer, this fall actually, we had in October over 250 people who came to Taos. We hope that some of you had the opportunity to meet some of them. They stayed for about four days. And they were talking about the things that, growing food and justice for all and how that food system, you know, can be brought back into the hands of, of really local people, which means national people because it's all over the country and indeed, in other countries around the world. We like to do our, our Rancher Forum, which is another educational fellowship and really marketing opportunity for people as well. So we were asked, you know, how can planners and local government bodies participate and what would be the role? And know the history of local food in your community. Start and/or support a local food policy council that also looks at the economic development opportunities from within, how to, how to grow those, bring those up and support what's already here in terms of wisdom and entrepreneurial skills and to advocate for and secure resources to support our local food systems. So thank you very much for your time. We'll be happy to answer any questions. Want me to help you?
With, with regards to the food policy council, how would you see that working? Perhaps a collaboration between the town, the county, Taos Pueblo, other entities?
That would be really, really helpful. There is a state food policy council, but it really works better if it's within your community because all the situations are different. And perhaps up the road, having a formalized food policy council would be helpful here.
And so what would be some of the responsibilities?
It might be responsible for, you know, looking at, you know, how to, how do you utilize some of this beautiful land that's just sitting there? You know, what kind of resources can be brought in? What kind of policies like the young people here to keep the bags from blowing out? You know, it would have a lot to do with how do we get local food into the schools? You know, they work on a number of issues that are identified by the community itself.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions?
Chairman, thank you. Patty, Terry, thank you for all the work you guys do in our community. I don't, I don't think a lot of people realize the number of, of economic development opportunities that you have brought to our community. You know, I, just for the viewing audience and the people in the audience, I would, if you would just kind of relate some of those, I guess, entrepreneurs or the businesses that out there that were actually developed through TCEDC, just to give us an idea. I know Leonel's Tomilies was one of them, I understand.
Right. He now has a restaurant. The Taos Mountain Energy Bars, which a lot of people have really enjoyed are, are, have a very large market. They have a product that can go all over the country. They've hired, even when they were in our kitchen, they employed 11 people. And now I know that their staff has grown as well. Many of the food carts that you see, Great Noodles, Things on Bent Street, The Crayberry, all of those came out of the food center, additional restaurants. And the bakers that we have in the food center, new and relating to some people's health concerns is Matt's Gluten Free. And he is now all over the state and is in stores in Silver City, Gallup, a lot of the, the products, Arabian Nights, you know, that's a, a product that has several different product lines and has also got a great reputation and allowed, you know, that particular woman who started that business to get three kids into and through some of the greatest colleges and the university combined with the education, you know, that they received here. And within our annual report, we often have a list of, of those businesses, but those are just a few examples.
So again, thank you. I just want to thank you, you know, you know, we talk about economic development in our community and I think you guys have provided a number of opportunities for people to actually continue on and actually make a life or make a, a business out of what started as a dream. So again, thank you for all those opportunities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I can't stress enough the, the need for that collaboration between the, the town and the county and, and TCDC and Taos Pueblo, the schools, hospital, to making sure that we address some of those ideas and the needs of the TCDC.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, I, I know we have quite a bit of an agenda. Do we want to address the minutes at this time or do we continue on with items 7A through, through H, the presentations?
Chairman, I just, I think we, I don't know if there was anybody else, citizens' concerns that were, were wanting to speak or not. I know that we kind of cut that off because we moved things up and we tabled it for the meanwhile, if, if we want to bring that up and then we can, you know, I know there's a number of issues before us. I think the minutes, if there's not a time constraint on them, I'll turn to, no, we can, we can table those if we have to bring them back at another meeting, we can do that.
Okay. We'll, we'll move forward then with the completion of citizens' concerns, the forum. Is there anyone that wishes to, to speak? Come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name's Brian Shields. I'm the executive director of Amigos Bravo's. And Rachel Khan, who's the projects director, is with me. I just want to make two brief comments. One about the Forest Service presentation. I really, really appreciate you guys bringing them forward and responding to the concerns of the community up there. That's an incredibly important watershed for the town of Taos and for the whole community. And what has been going on up there can be greatly improved. I was very pleased to hear them commit to improving up there. I think with knowing that the commissioners' eyes are on them, that movement might go a little further, a little faster. It's been many, many years now. And I, I wanted to just say that it would be really great if the Forest Service said that they may go after 319 money to be able to do some of the work up there. I haven't seen them do that up to this point, so keeping that pressure up would be very useful also. The other, the other comment I wanted to make about that is that, that E. coli is a big problem up in the upper watersheds and I know it keeps on getting blamed on other people doing other things, but really building, rebuilding that riparian area, making sure that there's a good buffer for the rivers is really critically important. And if we can move Forest Service management in that direction, all the better. And I think what you did today, getting them to come up and, and respond was really a great thing. My other comment has to do with the beautiful Midden Project and what you saw with Vista Grande School and the wonderful work that they've been doing. And I really wanted to commend both the solid waste department, the county solid waste department, who's been doing a fabulous job. And we look forward to working with them more. I also want to commend Scott because he's been doing a lot of this work on a volunteer basis and he's really been putting himself out. One other item that I wanted to bring up on that is that Amigos Bravo's and the beautiful Midden Project are finalists in an Art Place America grant proposal. This is a big deal. Art Place America is a big conglomerate of different banks, investment companies and funders, philanthropy, and they give out awards all over the country. We're one of the few rural ones. There's only three in New Mexico. And we are a finalist. We will, they will be paying a, a site visit here within the next couple of weeks. And we really appreciate the county being behind this project to try and deal with this trash. I think if we get this funding, it would really help to really put a focus on this work even more for us. It won't be just volunteer, but we'll actually be able to put a lot of resources into helping and working with the county and the town on this. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Chair and Commissioners, I just wanted to mention that we have been sampling up in the Upper Rio Fernando with the Water Sentinels group here in Taos and Amigos Bravo's as a collaborative for, this will be our eighth year, this coming season. And we have every year found high levels of E. coli. The Rio Fernando is, is the biggest problem of all the five rivers that we sample in the Taos area. And the upper site has had, and actually the upper and the lower site have had the, the biggest problems, the upper site being up in, the Forest Service up in the headwaters. And I am finishing up the 2013 report and I plan on delivering that along with copies of all our previous reports to the, to the county in the next couple of days or maybe by next week. So I ask you to, to watch out for that and, and to continue to, to encourage the Forest Service to take some action because again, it's been, we've, there's been these high E. coli levels for almost 10 years now and there hasn't been much action up until now. So we encourage, but really encourage to see the county stepping in and, and hopefully there'll be something done. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And again, I can't stress enough the amount of collaboration amongst everybody that, that needs to take place. Just working together, I think, is, is so important.
And Mr. Chairman, just to follow up briefly, the, I think the continuation of, of our...
And Mr. Chairman, just to follow up briefly, I think the continuation of our work with the Forest Service is important, and so I hope staff will actually get a copy of that report and we can see what mitigating practices are being planned and see if we can help them, move them forward and get them done the sooner the better.
Thank you, Commissioner Blankenhorn. Any questions from any of the other Commissioners? Before we move on to the agenda, I'd like to recognize our newly-elected Councilwoman, Ms. Judy Cantu, who's in the audience.
Congratulations, and thank you for being here. Also want to recognize our County Treasurer, Susan, our Deputy Treasurer, Clara, and our County Assessor, Darlene, and Bobby, Assessor Deputy. Thank you very much for being here. We'll move on then to item...
Concerned.
Okay, Stephen, go ahead.
At last week's meeting, there was some discussion about Camino de Medio. During the course of that discussion, there was mention made of capital outlays from the state, I think 180,000, 130,000. I don't know who got what, town and county, but the discussion was, to me, was rather vague. Was as if there were these anticipated changes or improvements or upgrades, and I wonder if at some point somebody might talk about what this, what these improvements are and how the town and the county are working together or not working together, sidewalks, whatever. And I noticed that Mr. Apodaca is here. Maybe he could, if he's familiar with it, explain a bit about how that funding came about, what the process was, and where the monies are going, how they're going to be used. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. And Camino de Medio right now is in the very preliminary stages. Again, that's going to be, to some extent, a joint project between the town of Taos and Taos County. With that, I would like to move on to item 7A, and that's the capital outlay for Taos County. Mr. Robert Apodaca, our county lobbyist, welcome. And we're also going to be discussing the CDBG funding, which is item 13A, along with this particular item.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just for clarification, Steve, 130,000 was for Taos County. The 180,000 was for the town of Taos. Again, we're looking at combining those two figures together so that we can work collaboratively for planning and design of Camino de Medio. So it's real preliminary as far as the bike paths and everything that we're looking at that road for.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Thank you for having me here today. You have to excuse me, I have a little bit of allergies or something going on here, so... Mr. Chair Commissioners, I just wanted to give you guys a brief update and overview of the 2014 legislative session. In the handouts that I've given you, there's, you'll find a couple documents, and I'll go through them, you know, pretty quickly because I know you guys have a pretty long agenda. But the first item is going to be kind of the overview of some of the bills that were, that passed the House and Senate and that got some action by the governors. I'll go through that in a little bit of detail. And then you're also going to have Exhibit A, which is a list of county projects that were out of House Bill 55, severance tax bonding projects. And those include pretty much throughout all of the county that were allocated to Taos County. Does not include, you know, for example, what the town of Taos, the village requests are, Red River received, but pretty much everything else. And then Exhibit B is, well, came out of Senate Bill 53, which is the general obligation bonds that was also signed by the governor. So, Mr. Chair, just very briefly, there were a number of bills that did pass the House and Senate that would affect county government in Taos County in this particular aspect. The, what I have in front of you is, a lot of this information is what is going to be provided at probably your next association of counties means by Steve Kopelman. I've taken some of their information. I've tweaked it to work in, you know, some of the numbers for Taos and so on and so forth. And I have included a couple other items that I saw that were relevant to Taos County. But the, if you look at the overall legislative session in general, I think you can look at, the budget issues were, continue to be a battle. I think you guys saw that, you know, in the middle of the session, there was, you know, the House Bill 2, the budget kind of exposed. They kind of got left to the last couple days of the session. And then what was, the interesting thing about what happened in House Bill 2 is generally you have House Bill 2, which is all the programmatic aspects for the state operations, for, you know, universities and everything else. That normally makes its way from the House to the Senate and then up to the governor because the House could not actually get a bill passed. The Senate came in and they substituted a bill and then sent it through the Senate, the House, and then to the governor. So there's a few political dynamics that will be seen over the next few months on House Bill 2. But House Bill 16 is a, this identifies the bill number. You look to the middle to show the title of the bill, and then towards the far right is the sponsor of the bill. So for example, House Bill 16, the increase in liquor excise tax distribution to local DWI grant fund, that was sponsored by Representative Carl Trugill. What this does, it takes 46% and transfers it to local DWI grant fund for three years. Currently, it's at 41 and a half percent. So after three years, the 46% will revert back to the 41 and a half percent. So these funds will be used for local DWI efforts, which will affect the local counties. The governor did sign this on March 10th, and it'll be effective July 1. House Bill 51, this is just some language change, right to farm nuisance ordinance or legislation. It just changes or tweaks a couple pieces of language. That was also signed on March 6th by Governor Martinez. House Bill 63 was a county detention behavioral health project bill that is sponsored by Representative Marlena. That did also make its way to the fourth floor, but it was vetoed by the governor. And this was specifically focused on Luna, Grant County, and Hidalgo to do some pilot projects on detention behavioral health issues, to look at that moving forward. This was a pilot project that could have been expanded county-wide, but that was vetoed. House Bill 55, which is the severance tax bonding projects, this is what all of you guys know as the capital outlay bill. There's about $231 million that was actually appropriated in this bill. The governor did sign this on March 11th. There are some vetoes. The Exhibit A, which you also have in your packets, that identifies the different projects that are coming to Taos County. The, there's one to note on page two, and I should probably highlight it in a different color, but the only veto to Taos County was the one for La Merced, the Cruzoada, Las Serna, Landon Building for $50,000. Otherwise, every other project for Taos County stayed intact under House Bill 55. So this has some of the specific, the project titles, the language, the agency that's going to be administering it, the dollar amount, and some of the local governments that will be responsible for it.
Mr. Apodaca, I really appreciate the listing and those that were, most of it was towards Asecias, which is a so important part of our community. And I'm glad to hear that almost everybody benefited, you know, including El Valle Los Rancho's, which has, was approved an $80,000 appropriation. And the board had a work study yesterday, and this one is going to go into continuing of the water or the sewer line in the Rancho's area up the hill towards Highway 518. And so, did you say that the only one out of the, the only request out of the entire list that was vetoed was the land grant, Cruzoada, Las Serna land grant?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Romero, for Taos County, correct.
Okay.
Yes. There was another project that was out of the reauthorization bill that I'll get to in a little bit that was also vetoed, and I'll talk about that in a second.
Okay, thank you.
So, so, Mr. Chair Commissioners, as the gentleman did mention earlier, there was $130,000 for the Camino de Medio project that will be coming to Taos County. There's a companion piece for 180,000 that will also be going to the town of Taos. So again, you know, hopefully with, through collaborative efforts, we can continue and start looking at those projects. But as you mentioned, that is in the preliminary stages at this point. So, Mr. Chair, moving on, House Bill 287, firefighter supplemental benefits. That increases the survivor benefits from $50,000 to $250,000 for firefighters when they're killed in line of duty. So those are the House bills that made it up to the fourth floor that the governor acted on in some manner or another. The next section is the, are the Senate bills. So Senate Bill 53, that is the general obligation bill. The, there's about $169 million that was authorized in general obligation bond. That will be going up to the voters in November. That's, when you guys go to the ballot, you'll see, you know, senior centers on there, universities. One project was for the UNM campus. So Exhibit B that I submitted identifies any of the projects that would be affecting Taos County in one way or another also. So there were not any bills, any projects that were line itemed under Senate Bill 53 for the general obligation bond bill. Senate Bill 163, which is the capital outlay reauthorization, there was, it's about a 27-page bill that reauthorized 59 projects from one purpose to another. Now, one of those projects that was included in there was the reauthorization of Cuesta Watershed and River Restoration to the Community Center project in Cuesta. That one project was vetoed out of Senate Bill 163.
Mr. Apodaca, going back to Exhibit B, these were funded?
They are, Mr. Chair Commissioner, on Exhibit B, these are projects that you will see on the ballot in November. If they're voted on by the public, they will be funded as of January, the bonds will probably be sold as of January 2015.
Okay. And these are very important. They, you know, they're with regards to our senior citizens, renovations at the Phil Lovato Senior Citizen Center, the Pico Diz Pueblo Center, as well as Chamisa and Taos Pueblo and UNM.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, and just so that you guys are familiar with the process, this is an opportunity moving forward. A number, the general obligation bond bill comes about every two years. So if there's any projects, any type of senior center projects that we may want to consider moving forward, it's key to start again, engage with the agency of long-term aging at this point so that we can make the case and justification of why some of these projects should be funded in the next cycle. So we can work with you guys moving forward on some of those aspects.
Thank you very much.
And, Mr. Chair, on Senate Bill 268, the community substitute of 368, which was one of the more contentious items during the session, was the sole community provider. You guys were probably, you guys are aware how some of the hospitals were wanting the counties to give 180 grocery receipts tax. The counties were at 116. There was a compromise go at, to 112. The, we felt this was a pretty fair compromise. There were some line item vetoes that were made to this bill, which I believe are going to be challenged. The governor does have the ability to line item appropriation bills. The contention right now is that this is not an appropriation bill. So I've identified there were four areas that were, that were line itemed that I believe are going to be challenged by the New Mexico Association of Counties, so that's still to be determined of, see how this whole thing plays out. Okay? Mr. Chair, the, again, the General Appropriation Act, Senate Bill 313, again, $500,000 appropriation from local DWI fund to fund the state drug courts, that's one item. 3.3 million appropriation to DFA to reimburse counties for the, for some of the detention costs. So those are two other items that will have some impact on some of the counties with detentions and with respect to the local DWI funds and drug court. And finally, Mr. Chair, the Hold Harmless Grocery Receipts Tax Authority that, you know, the counties have been dealing with for a couple of years now, there were a number of pieces of legislation that were introduced during this last session. None of them got through this last session, but for the upcoming session, for the 60-day session, I'm sure this is going to be, there'll probably be plenty of time to address a fix, to take care of some of those hold harmless tax issues that the county is going to be dealing with moving forward and some of the other local governments. So, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, this is just a brief overview. I just want to give you guys a quick synopsis. I know you guys are short on time, have a long agenda. I can answer questions or if you need to speak to me after, I'd be, we're happy to address any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Apodaca. Mr. Archuleta, oops, okay. Any thoughts as far as the county's perspective on Senate Bill 268 and 314?
Mr. Chairman, as Mr. Apodaca, you know, there was, it was a long, hard battle throughout the legislative session. Rob was very instrumental in helping us with Senator Morales to help us through this process. And so I think, you know, we're going to be fine. It's, we're going to be doing some projections and looking at that. I don't want to go into the hold harmless aspect of that because it has a sunset date on that also. And if we can continue receiving some of those funds for our general fund purposes, I'd rather stay on track with that. But we can brief the Commission as time goes on. I don't know how the challenge is going to work out as far as NMAC. We did have a county managers' meeting yesterday on the telephone, and basically it was unanimous that we should go ahead and challenge this. And I'm sure the executive board will also be hearing about this from New Mexico Association of Counties on that whole 268.
Thank you, Mr. Archuleta, and thank you, Mr. Apodaca. Thank you. At this time, I would like to move on to the, if the Commission, I know there's two items, there's quite a bit of items still that we need to cover under item seven of the agenda, but we do have, if the Commission will allow the presentation of the Employee of the Month certificates for the month of...
Mr. Chairman, we needed to finish on B. We also, I'm sorry, on A, we also had the...
Okay, yeah, I apologize. CDBG hearing, Ms. Anita Poria.
Members of the Commission, Mr. Chairman, you had before you at a previous meeting, which I was not able to attend, the all-important CDBG project that needs to be identified for the year 2014. As you were discussing what project was going to go forth, I was actually at the workshop where they informed us that the application is due on May the 16th, which means there's a lot of legwork that has to go on between now and then. Environmental, income surveys, I have to get permission from DFA to actually go into my income survey. Mr. Apodaca was also at that workshop with me. We did discuss with DFA the concept of picking the three roads that were passed along to me. They were not real excited about that in that it was in two different districts, and that would mean it would be two different projects. They only want one identifiable project. So in going forth from there, I stand for advice, direction, whatever you want to give me.
Commissioner Sanchez, and then Commissioner Barone.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Anita, thank you, and, Mr. Apodaca, for the hard work. I know that we had brought this up the last meeting, and I just want to see how... know that we had brought this up the last meeting, and I just want to see how Avragadero Road in my district, how it's looking as far as, I know I put some money into that road last year, shovel-ready. I'd like to get the support of the commission to be able to do that road. And what I'm asking is doing the full two miles of asphalt, three-inch, and also if there's monies left over, if it's possible that we do aprons for the roads that are coming on to the main artery, Avragadero Road, that way it doesn't start crumbling as you get a school bus going through there, which we do have a school bus route and other roads here. And we got the farm there in Cerro. So, if we could do some aprons on the entrance to that road, that's something that I'd like to see if it will go to my district, the monies.
Okay. Commissioner Barone?
And I was just waiting for a recommendation from staff. You know, I know there's a number of roads that we'd like to done, but a lot of the roads don't meet the income qualifications. So, you know, I know that, you know, a lot of it is based on that. You know, we'd love to see there's a lot of movement on the road, on the Millicent Rogers Road, but I believe that road doesn't meet the income qualifications. And there's a number, you know, Camino del Medio is going to be a tough sale. It's not ready right now. There's money being allocated from the legislature to do the study. So, it's really not ready. But I think Commissioner Sanchez, I think that road is ready. If that's a recommendation of staff, I believe the income qualifications would be met in that area.
Mr. Chair Commissioner, just like Anita explained, I mean, low to moderate income is really the major key on this aspect. So, if you have other projects that are going to be outside that norm, you probably won't get funded. The readiness, the leveraging, and being able to get these projects completed within a 12- to 18-month period, those are huge factors. So, you know, whatever project you pick, yeah, that low to moderate income aspect really needs to be key.
And I like the idea that Avragadero Road is on this list because of the fact that it also, it serves the national monument area. And that's a very good economic factor that we would definitely get a lot of benefit from if we support the improvement of it as well. Commissioner Duran?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This changes, when did all this occur?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Duran, changes...
From two roads in one district or just in one district?
It's not really, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Duran, it's not really a change. We have gone after several roads, but all of those roads were just in one district. They weren't spread out. So, my environmental, my income survey actually served that one area, which I must say was in your district. If we had to go out for two different projects and try and meld it into one, we're going to end up having to do two separate income surveys. So, that adds three weeks to the process, plus two different environmentals. When I submit my application, I like my environmentals and my income surveys to be a part of that application because we do receive extra points for that.
And on the moderate income, this has been going on for years and years, right?
It's a requirement.
And why is it that now at the last minute, you know, you come forward, when Camino del Medio was on the ICIP plan, and so was Millicent Rogers, why is it that you didn't approach the commission two or three years ago and say, "Look, this is not going to qualify because of the moderate income"?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Duran, the ICIP and the CDBG funds are two different animals. ICIP, there's not a lot of low to moderate income.
My question is, why isn't that you didn't inform the commission two or three years ago about this? Why is it now at the last minute?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question. Low to moderate income has always been in the CDBG project, always, even with your district.
I know that.
That's why we went door-to-door.
But why is it that you did not inform the other commissioners about that Millicent Rogers or Camino del Medio were not going to...
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Duran, I did state when we were here and we teleconferenced the other two commissioners, I did state that that low to moderate income, it would be hard to prove.
My question is, why is it you didn't inform them a year ago or two years ago? You were informing them about this two weeks ago.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Duran, because I did not understand that Camino del Medio and Millicent Rogers was going to be a CDBG project. The project that I was worried about at that time was your District 5 project.
Commissioner, Commissioner Duran, Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Yeah, Steve, did you have something first?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I just want to address that. What I've directed staff to do is go down the ICIP list. We'll add a separate column on that, and we'll look at all the items that the commissioners have for the ICIP and start doing the low to income moderate, so that when we pass out that list, which is used for several purposes, they'll know right off the bat which ones are going to be close and which ones don't qualify. And so, we'll add that item or that to the end of the list and make sure that we have that on there.
And although, you know, I support Avragadero Road for this year, it's important also to know that the Pilad Bridge that crosses the Rio Grande in Pilad, New Mexico, you know, it serves a community of at least 30, 40 homes in there, and probably just as many families. It's also important to recognize that particular project is something that we need to address fairly soon.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other question. Now, Mr. Chavez walked in. I'd like to know what it's going to take to do a three-inch mat in Avragadero Road. Do you have them figures?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I don't recall exactly how much money it would cost for three-inch mat. I know that five inches would spend at least $500,000.
But didn't they get back to you that Commissioner Sanchez was interested in doing a three-inch and see how much money it would take to do that?
Nobody told me to run up those numbers, even though I can do it rather quickly if I need to.
Okay.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chavez, how much is it for approximately on Avragadero Road, a three-inch mat per mile?
Half a mile would cost about $116,000. And we have 1.28 left, so...
Well, we're talking about the whole road. We're not talking where we did the triple, double penetration. We're talking about from start to beginning. So, what's the total length of that road?
I understand what you're asking. I'm saying that half a mile, like in C-110, costs $116,000. Actually, it was four tenths of a mile. So, you could multiply that times three, and that's about how much it would cost.
So, just doing the math very quickly, it's about almost $380,000, around there.
Okay, Commissioner Barone?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I, yeah, I like the manager's plan to identify these roads. I mean, we've sort of identified amongst ourselves that roads are going to be a focus of CDBG. And we had talked about Camino del Medio and Millicent Rogers for quite some time now. And so, I do share Commissioner Duran's concern because I feel like now we're at this last minute, doing our best to spend this $500,000, and we're really not doing it, you know? I mean, I'll vote for Avragadero Road, but this is going to entail putting three inches over a double penetration that we just invested 50 grand in.
Not over the double penetration.
Not over the double penetration. So, we're just talking about $350,000 for the remainder.
Right.
And still, that's money well spent, but we hate leaving anything on the table, so...
Again, I guess I need to clarify, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, Rick, I'm talking about the whole road. I'm not talking about not the double penetration. And, you know, the attorney just, again, informed me 1.5 miles is what you're saying. I believe it's two points, some miles, the full road.
The total road is 1.9 miles.
1.9?
Yeah.
Okay. So, then we have to multiply that one times four, then, is what you're...
Well, you could figure it's almost two miles, so multiply times four, yeah.
Okay.
Which goes back to my point. It's a good project, but it does not fully expend the money on the table, the available funds. And so, now, you know, we're just kind of stuck here at the last minute because we had other plans for that money. But now that we come to find that it's not going to meet the low to moderate income threshold, we're kind of scrambling. And that's why we had made an attempt to do both Avragadero in Cuesta and then a double penetration for a couple of roads in Commissioner Romero's district. And so, I'm a little frustrated at that.
As I am.
Okay, Commissioner Barone?
And I guess the question from Commissioner Sanchez was, Mr. Chavez, was that can we use part of that funding to do the aprons of, you know, those turnouts on that particular road? I think that would further use the other money that would be allocated that we would apply for to expend it fully, you know, if we apply for the $500,000 and we get all $500,000, would that, you know, all those turnouts off of that road?
Yeah, you could certainly use the money, or you could pave the turnouts up to the right-of-way, let's say. I believe that in that area, the right-of-way is documented, perhaps. I know that Mr. Quintana said that they voluntarily donated properties for the roadway.
And the reason he was asking is because, you know, we have deterioration of roads all over the community where, you know, there's not turnouts, and it keeps, continues to break off. And so, then it deteriorates the major part of the road that we work on.
Mr. Chairman, there's other opportunities to expend as much money as possible, possibly even the entire amount. That road is very wide, as you guys witnessed when we visited last week. When we did the double penetration, we did 24 feet of roadway, which is two 12-foot driving lanes. But you could go 26 or 28, whatever the entire width could be.
Okay. And then, Anita, on the low to moderate income evaluations that we do, is it based on just people that live along the road, or is it based on people that actually use the road? You know, I just want some little bit of clarification so that down the road or in the future, as we're planning for other projects, we have a good understanding.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Barone, it is based on the specific location. What they do is they take the number of people that live there, and they give you a random selection of the people you have to poll. So, in the case of Upper Ranchitos, that was going to be a very narrow line to meet that low to moderate income. So, we took it a step further and actually interviewed more households around the area on the little arterial roads that went into Upper Ranchitos Road.
Okay. And Anita, another question with regards to the maximum amount that can be awarded through the CDBG funding. What is that amount?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the amount that is applied for is $500,000. Historically, with road projects, the last two road projects we received, we got $400,000 with our $40,000 match, making a $440,000 project.
Okay. And so, chances are that not all of the $500,000 will then be awarded to any particular project that the commission chooses today.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, that would be a thought. I can't really say how the awarding is going to be this year.
Okay. And I fully agree with Commissioner Blankenhorn in that, you know, not just because we would be awarded $500,000, does it mean that we have to go the extra mile, no pun intended. But, you know, I just want to make sure that the county is frugal with those monies and that we take everything into consideration and that those improvements that are made on the road, that we apply the two, three-inch mat of pavement versus 10 inches, just because we have the money. I just want to make sure that we're being careful and considerate, the fact that these are monies, are taxpayer dollars, and that they're spent wisely.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question, Anita, on, out of your goodness of your heart, you cannot just go out to Millicent Rogers afterwards, you know? I mean, in the next four or five months and do a moderate income? This way, for the new commission that comes in, you know, in next year or whatever, they know whether they can apply to those two roads or they can't apply.
Mr. Chairman...
You got to get authority from the CD people?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Romero, I would love to do that out of the goodness of my heart. And the paycheck I get from Taos County, I would go out and do a low to moderate income.
See, this way, for the commission that comes in, knows whether they can apply to Millicent Rogers or Camino del Medio.
And, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, you have to be really careful about that, though, because, I mean, if I'm going to be, we had 50-some road projects on the ICIP, we need to see which ones we're going to identify because I can't do 50 low to moderate income surveys in...
No, but those two have already been on the list, you know what I mean? And this way, at least they know where they stand.
Yes, sir. I would be more than happy to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Anita, Rick, thank you, Commissioner Blankenhorn, for bringing up about the money being left on the table. And I don't want to leave any money on the table. I think we got a good plan if we can do some aprons on that. Rick, we're probably looking at $340,000 for the road. And with the aprons, I think that would use up that extra money that's going to be left. So, and also, Commissioner, Chairman Romero, thank you for bringing up the Rio Grande del Norte. That is in my district, and it's going to bring in tourism from the north and from the south. And I would love to have that road taken care of, so I take care of the tourism, you know? And so, it's something that, as you well know, I am not going to be doing a second term, but I'd like to really take care of my constituents. That road has been a mess since I came on board, and I'd like to leave those folks in good, with a good road, let's put it that way. So, thank you so much, Anita, Mr. Apolakka, Rick. Thank you so much for your hard work. And Commissioners, do we need a motion? I so move.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Steve?
Yes.
Yes, provided it isn't come back for speed bumps later on because it's going to be a drag.
Or people wanting to use it as a landing strip. Yes.
Chairman?
Okay.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. Gracias.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll move on to Item 7C. It is my honor. It's, we have a presentation, proclamation, and plaque to Ms. Trudy Healy. And I would like to have our county manager go ahead and proceed with this.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask the commission to come down to the bottom here?
[inaudible] You want to say something after the proclamation? Say a few words? Okay. No, no, it'd be great that you say something. All right. Be it proclaimed, whereas Trudy Valerio from Rancho de Taos acquired her passion for the esecia culture from her father, Juan I. Valerio, who served as mayor domo for 40 years. And whereas, Trudy has two children, Lee and Felice, and married Ed Healy, whose family founded Utah Construction, which oversaw six companies that built the Hoover Dam and later merged with General Electric. And whereas, Taos County was a leader and the first county in New Mexico to initiate a grant forming a public-private relationship with the Healy Foundation to fund the New Mexico Bureau Mexico Bureau of Geology and Mineral Resources for the aquifer mapping and monitoring program for the state of New Mexico. And whereas Trudy cowboied on some of the largest spreads in northern New Mexico, and during that time became an advocate for Alan Savory of the UU Bar Ranch in Simarón, where grasslands and livestock flourished, creating new growth and water resources. And whereas Trudy later helped bring five South African chiefs together to learn Alan Savory's methods, helping the South African villages to become self-sustaining and manage water effectively. And whereas Trudy was nominated to the Cowgirl Hall of Fame for her pioneering work. And whereas, water is Trudy's primary passion, which coincides with the Healy Foundation's focus to ensure that all New Mexico communities are healthy and that our focus is on our land and water issues and projects. And whereas, Trudy received the New Mexico Department of Agriculture's Partnership Award for her efforts in creating a regulatory training partnership at New Mexico State University to aid agricultural industries. And whereas, Trudy was honored by the Office of the State Engineer, Interstate Stream Commission, and the Navajo Nation for her funding of the Public Broadcasting Service documentary, "The Water Haulers," about the Navajo Nation San Juan Basin's water rights settlements. And whereas, the Rocky Mountain Youth Corps honored Trudy for her outstanding work in protecting New Mexico's watersheds. Leadership New Mexico honored her with a distinguished alumnus award for philanthropy for her focus on statewide water issues. And the Uten Transboundary Resource Center at the University of New Mexico School of Law recognized her for sponsoring the Model Compact Study, the Model Compact Study, and the Winners' Doctrine Centennial, which brought together national experts to study the Navajo water settlement. And whereas, Trudy was featured for her contributions in Remarkable Women of Taos, where she was deemed the water protector. And whereas, Trudy has traveled across New Mexico to garner votes for the successful passage of New Mexico Constitutional Amendment Three in 2006, which created a water trust fund to support projects designed to preserve and protect the state's water supply. And whereas, Trudy Valerio Healy is hereby recognized for the significant contributions that she has made in protecting New Mexico's valuable water resources. And whereas, the appreciation of the Taos Board of Commissioners is hereby extended to Trudy for her generous giving of time and financial resources in support of water-related projects. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Taos County Board of Commissioners and the chairman of the Taos County Commission do hereby proclaim Tuesday, March 18, 2014, Trudy Healy Day.
Took a while.
Wow. I don't know if I can even say any of this without crying, you know, because, you know, I got honors at the state level, the Senate and the House of Representatives, but there's nothing like getting honored at home around the people that I represent and I think about when I'm out there fighting for water. I was very lucky to be able to be appointed to the Water Trust Board, and since I was on there for 10 years, I was the treasurer, and we gave about $300 million in water projects in the state. So I learned, it was kind of the Harvard or the Yale of water, I guess you could say, for years. And I have to say that how I learned how to go fight for water was two things my dad told me when I was little. He told me once, and we were sitting at the aseca, he said, "You know, Trudes," he said, "you won't impress me if you drive up in a Cadillac and have a fur coat." He said, "Because this is your wealth right here, this aseca, this water. Remember that when you go out there." And then he said later on, he said, "You know, the other," he said, "one thing, you won't be able to fight for water unless you sound like the aseca." He said, "You can't sound like the river. You can't roar." He said, "You have to go in, and you have to be silent, and you have to do it quietly, and you'll get a lot more done." And that's how I fought for water in New Mexico. And I'd just like to say that right now, I'm very nervous because it's in a lot of danger right now, and all eyes are on the north. And everybody here needs to really pay attention. There's not good leaders right now in water. And I was, I was taken off the Water Trust Board a month ago, and I wake up at 3:00 in the morning, because I guess you could say I've been the watchdog for the whole state. I'm getting calls from all over the state because they didn't have to worry about water as long as I was in there, because I would call them and let them know what they needed to watch out for to come and speak or whatever they needed to do, fight for their areas. And while there's no watchdog right now, so I'm still going to wake up at 3:00 in the morning worrying about everybody in the state. But I just want to thank Chairman, Commissioners, and gosh, for the first time in history, Commissioner and Mayor. Thank you so, so much for this honor. It just, I can't even tell you how much it means to me. And I want to thank all my friends and family, because everybody here that came for me has a story about some kind of water, whether it's Morrison Mateo back there cleaning the asecas all the time for us, or my son always teaching me what not to do and what to do with grazing, and of course, Ed. He's one of the few people that have moved to New Mexico that have invested in all of everything, from education to, well, just everything, water. He came and invested his time and money, and that has given me huge opportunities. But again, I don't forget where my wealth is. My wealth is the water, and that's your wealth. Thank you.
The chairman of the commission will also be presenting a plaque and a scroll, Ms. Healy. I'd also like to recognize that Senator Linda Lopez is here. And if you could please stand, if you want to say a few words or? We're going to go ahead and have a little, there's some tables set up up front, so we have some lunch for everybody, and we'd just like everybody to enjoy a meal with Trudy. So if everybody could please go ahead and come outside, and we'll have our guest of honor help us with a meal. Thank you.